I'm going.
Basic conversation.
That is, that's a Minnesota conversation. No, yeah, first one to experience something like that though, Doc.
Yeah, never mind. Always sorry.
Should I can tell you the story?
You don't choose one?
What's I get?
Uh, six o'clock, call meeting order. All please rise, we pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to be the republic of which it stands. One nation, united in this whole, with which we. Dinner has its role.
Yep.
Need to approve this evening's agenda, gentlemen. Make caution. I will move we approve this evening's agenda. Consider. It's on. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The agenda is approved. Excuse me, consent agenda will be passed with one counsel motion unless there's something you'd like to remove.
I'd like to remove I, J, L, and M.
I, J, L, and M.
I, I.
Alright. Good, um, then I will make a motion and pass the consent agenda. With, oh, the items. I, J, L, excuse me. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Ron, here.
Question, am I? I have the same question on I and J. I may have missed this earlier, however, I noticed we have a category that's over called miscellaneous, which is about seven thousand dollars in each of the two, and I we didn't budget anything for it, and I wasn't aware of what that consisted of.
I'll have to report later, I can't remember what I have coded under there, but I believe it has something to do with the project.
Okay.
Um, I apologize, Ron, I'm not prepared to give you the exact answer. I'll, I'll report afterwards. But it was, it was booked in last month's, um, income statements and bills, I can tell you that much, it's not a new bill for this month to be approved.
Yeah, I just would never notice that code, it was obviously spread, so I didn't notice it this time, it looked like about fourteen thousand.
It is most likely an item that was unbudgeted for, because that's usually how I do that one, but income statement needs to be like, or something that's unique. That is not a budget item, I'll make sure I follow up with the P and O if that's satisfactory.
Hmm, I just was curious, let's be clear.
Sure.
I'm gonna notice.
It, I there pardon, there's a parting I want to say, it's for the project, but then there's another part where he says no, because I've been doing it under construction services for everything under there, so it had to have been something other substantial that we had to get done this year and make them recall what it is.
Okay. Right, and then the next one was the all through court. There's an entry under the, at the bottom, near the bottom called cash over, and it's a negative amount of twenty-two hundred.
Yep.
Is that to be assumed that's cash short?
It is not cash short, so what we've been booking under this is, um, the golf course gets a number of deals that are offered out to the public, um, one of them is on the radio. Um, it's called the, a golf card where people will buy it for a deal and then we end up come in and play eighteen holes and, you know, pay for nine, or there's, um, I think the
Stay.
The lion club state ends, there's a stay in play. So the way, um, their club caddy, their point of sale system is working, they have to book all of that revenue, like an eighteen hole into it and then deduct it. So we had to create a line, and you can see that on the expenses side for the gift certificates and discounts. So overages are when people redeem like, sometimes they'll get their eighteen, but they won't play it that then, right when they come, they'll come and play it later. So then they, so then they have to bring it up again, because every time somebody goes out in order for them to book a lot of rounds they're playing, they still have to put it in the point of sale system. So we have to book it somewhere as a revenue, but it's not. So it's not, it's not cash over, and it's not cash short. It's just a way to book the certificates and the discounts. I don't know if that was completely clear to you.
Yes.
It's not a perfect science.
Yeah.
I wish it would.
These are discount cards or whatever.
Yeah.
And you have to book the amount you're not getting based on the discount versus the regular.
Yeah, and there's like four of them, there's, um, I think the radio one is the summer, summer tour card. Um, the stand plays. There's, um, the Lions Club does a, a one of those books they have, Max, those yellow books.
I have seen them.
Yeah.
Can I tell you which?
But Olson sells them like hotcakes. There's a, um, play eighteen, pay nine card in there, so it's a bunch of, um, offers that are out there, what people will only have to pay for half of it, but they have to book the full amount, they're not taking discounts, so it's an in and an out. But.
Yeah, those books are like when are they, twenty dollars, and there's like fifty or a hundred some dollars worth of stuff inside it, it's like putting the kids through the rut where they sell those banned books and coupons for everywhere.
Yep, it's very difficult for the department to book it, because you can't just put it all in green fees and then take another discount afterwards. So if I can find a better way to do it in the next coming years, I will, but this is, this is what's been working on our P and L for now, at least, so I know where that discount is going, is in this one particular line. Don, you look like you.
So, I, I just how are you figuring out how many rounds is then your, actually your, people are going, help then?
So, club caddy, every time they sell green fees, when there's a difference between what Niski can ring up in her point of sale system and what I can look in our fund accounting system, and that's where these types of numbers look kind of strange to you. Um, but in club caddy, when she runs green fees and we get the revenue sheet for that day's totals, green keys are actually listed as a subdepartment. So there's a dollar amount pre-taxed with tax in the total, and on there is a number of units. So she can see the number of units, nine holes, eighteen holes. Sometimes there's more, someone's playing another nine. Without, from seven holes. Um, and she uses that units to get the rounds of golf that are being played that she's reporting to you guys, and I guess yeah, all I'm gonna report to you guys in these is just the revenue and expenses. Those details that Niski will bring will be more granularly, granular, more that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Under there. Should I go with my question?
Yeah, go ahead.
I had a, again, that's a curiosity question. It looks like we have an entry that we're over for cleaning and air mart services, and it's not fifteen, we've left it nine, I was just wondering if we were dirtier than normal, or we, we were messier.
There's only two vendors that we pay out of this fund line, and that's Melissa's Cleaning and Air Mart Services, so there's gonna be some months where the services that we get from Air Mart are rugs, our towels, um, our cleaning products, our deodorizers, all of that will be more than other months. Um, this is fairly new for Shonda to be doing her budget this way, a lot of the times, Air Mart has always been um, coded under operating. And she's trying to make it more granular by only putting those two vendors in this service line, so it is common for this line to go over, yes, um, base amount that Melissa's Cleaning bills us is for a set amount of hours that she provides her cleaning service to the liquor store. And it ranges anywhere between eighteen and twenty hours a month. So her services are contractual, so many things that would really make it go over would probably be in her.
And Air Mart is exclusively rugs or?
Oh, they do so many things, um, they used to be Amerifind. They, they assumed, um, Amerifind and Air Mart is a fairly large company. They provide our rugs here at City Hall. They provide the cleaning services, tablecloths, oh, deodorizers, so the list goes on. It's a lot, um, paper towel, paper towel dispensers, um, and so, toilet paper, yeah.
So Melissa is just the physical cleaning process?
Yeah, she's completely separate from what Air Mart is.
Air Mart provides products.
Correct.
Not necessarily.
That is also correct, yes. Yeah.
Don, did you have something different on it?
No, that's where I was at.
Oh, wonderful, okay.
Yep.
So going through that.
Yeah, you're welcome. Yep.
Then can I get a motion? To approve those four items? I will, we approve the four items, I, J, L, and M. A second there. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Vote. Those items are passed. On to Blackhead Forum. So no one further forum? Who moved to reports of committees and staff? Mike?
Uh, not really a whole lot for you guys, just kind of stuff as usual. Uh, we did quite a bit last month to help the school. And, uh, the Blackhead Drakes, uh, not Drakes, Knights baseball team, get ready to host the, uh, state tournament here, so we helped out quite a bit up there. Did a good bit down at, uh, the wayside to get ready for wood carvers, and that went off without a hitch, so other than that, just trying to work on everything else around town. We have projects as we can.
I have a verbal thank you for your help at the baseball field.
Absolutely.
I didn't know.
Yep.
Anybody said anything to you?
Oh, yeah, 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 I passed along to the guys.
They had said me, too, so.
Well, we appreciate the, the, uh, acknowledgement. Anything for me from anybody else? I have a whole lot for you guys.
Alright, you're completely in the new building now, and?
Yep, we're in there, we're still working on some kinks on the building itself, but
Everything is basically good.
Yep, yep, over, overall it's good, overall, there's some small things here and there, but that's to be expected as we, you know, work ourselves in there. You know, a few, few good sized projects coming up still yet this, this, uh, season with um, the new flower bed, we're gonna try to put in down at the wayside and um, some more improvements out at the beach with kind of a, a rock barrier, we'll call it, for parking, so that the ATVs cars, stuff can't get through to the pavilion and onto the beach, and some more landscape work out there. Some more stuff at the wayside rest and in the bathroom itself. Uh, what else, we're going to widen the driveway out at Pine Tree Park, um, it seems that the campers are getting bigger and bigger, and going in and out of there, especially coming out. There's not much visibility to the north as you come out, and if you get two campers trying to go in and out at the same time, it's just not fun for anybody out there, so put some culvert extensions on and widen the approach and widen the road going in and out of there, and maybe some few other projects around that we're working on.
Your thoughts on what it, is it easier to have the two? To have one entrance exit, not?
Yeah, we're not, we're not gonna open that north one.
Okay.
No, with the way that camping sites are up there, um, I, I just, I feel that that would take away quite a bit from the, uh, seclusion of that end, so to speak, and you'd have a lot of people kind of coming right in and out right on top of a couple of campers there, and so I'd just rather.
That old entrance that got blocked out.
Up on the north side, yeah, by the, I think, the modern end.
I wouldn't do that, that's such a blind spot coming out of the corner from Hillcrest, from TV that road anyway, I'm sure the county wouldn't want it.
It's there, I mean, we can use it, it's a usable approach if we, you know, take a couple of trees and stuff out. I think it's, I think we're better off just to, you know, we started widening last year out there. Um, ran into some trouble with the stump grinder that we had rented, and that was a whole hoopla thing, and we kind of ran out of time out there. But we've got it, you know, cleared out for width wise, you've just got a couple of culvert extensions on each side of the existing culvert, and you can bring some fill in and bring that up, and and we'll have to do a little tar patch out there right on the approach itself, you know, coming in. And then we'll just bring some clay base and some gravel in for the road itself, and then you'll be able to actually pass two campers next to each other on the main road into the campground. So as long as everybody pays attention and drives the right way through the campground, there, there won't be problems in the campground, but I've seen a lot of crazy stuff out there already, so.
Keep your fingers crossed.
Yeah.
Yeah. And what about down, uh, the American? Down by the, the road right there, the?
Well, there, 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 there's a whole thing that's going on down there for a while, um, with the way the road is down there and the way the seventy-one restaurant parking lot kind of comes into the road. What we've had over the years is a lot of people not understanding that that road is not a parking lot. So we'll get, you know, trucks and fish houses, or trucks and boats, or whatever, parked right on the road over there, and we get complaints from residents and business owners that they're not able to use the road because people are parked on it. So the other day, we've been talking about things to do for a while, we actually put, uh, we put a bunch of no parking signs up down there last summer.
Yeah, last summer.
Last summer, I think it was. Um, of the eight that I put up, six were stolen. So, yep. So what we did now last week is we, we actually took the grader down there, and there was some overgrowth on that road from multiple things over the years, um, mainly the way that that, that lot was plowed for many years there at the seventy-one restaurant, is that they would plow from the parking lot over the road into the ditch. Well, if you look at the parking lot down there, it's, you know, deteriorated badly, so they've been bringing a lot of granite in over the years, well, and the winner of the first couple of plows, that granite all made its way over, you know, by the trees and onto the road, and over time, I mean, it's obviously been quite an amount of time ruined with grass and everything, so the other day, we went down there with the grader, peeled that back quite a ways, I'm sure we probably saw the dirt pile and everything.
That came from the field back?
Yeah, that all came from the field back.
Thought you pulled that in.
Nope, that was all from the field back. Um, and we're actually gonna paint that stretch right there, where it goes from the lake road to oh, it's right about in line with the American Inn where it turns to gravel there. So we'll paint some side striping on it, and we'll paint a center stripe, and hopefully people will understand that it's a road and not a parking lot then.
Is that asphalt?
Yes, sir, it is.
Until you get past.
Yeah, for probably.
The hotel.
Well, it's right about at the hotel, so it's, you know, probably three or four hundred feet, something like that. So, yeah, that's, that's what's going on with that stretch right there. Just trying to get people to get out of the way.
Just saw everybody working on it, I was like, huh.
Yeah, yeah, that's, well, that's, you know, that's one of those, you know, one of the many small, you know, projects, we call it small, it's a bit of a project, but one of the many things that we're running around doing all the time, is stuff like that, just trying to improve on what we have with what we have, so.
In the winter time, you don't snow from one place to the other, and suddenly you make dirt for one place.
Well, you know, we didn't put dirt there, but we're on the hook to take care of it, that's why they help out some things like that out.
There's that parking lot's deteriorated so much all last Saturday, I mean, there's that one, um, drain system, multiple byler, sign, and every winter they cover it up.
Yep, yep.
It's the last thing to freeze.
It gets covered, and then, you know, in the spring it can't take the water, and really, I mean, it's an old, and that's, that's private too.
They should probably get away.
You know, there, there's all sorts of things, it's just there's, once the pavement starts to deteriorate the way it has over there, you're gonna have water issues, it's just like they had to pull the concrete out by itself door because it was seeping so bad, but yeah, so.
Yep.
Or how it go, especially in this country, the, the ground moves a lot. Water, so I know where to go.
Very good, alrighty, thanks guys. Your story.
Uh, no, I don't have a whole lot, we don't have a whole lot going on either, um, wood carvers was pretty well for us, they were really good sales, everything was good. We have the Backwood Bash coming up, which we will have a tent on that, uh, wayside grass park. Again, it's gonna be down there as well this year, um, but all we got going.
It's up on the sign and?
Yep, we have that all up on the sign, we've got the Drake scramble on the sign, we've got the backwards bash on the sign. We had something up there for the Art History Center, we put up for the baseball tournament, we put some stuff up there for them, for that, welcoming people to town.
It's gonna get through August.
It's gonna be.
Alright. Well, if there's something else, really? You can move on, or?
Well, that
I don't have.
That liquor committee meeting that's on our agenda, that, um, is, was requested by Shonda. That's, you guys, both I believe. Ron. I believe. Ron? I better go look. I screwed that up once already.
It's been a while since we've had a liquor.
Well, Shonda out for one, um, and she's off, I think this week. Yes, we should have, so we pushed it out a little ways, she has some more information regarding cannabis and what can and cannot be used, and how it could potentially become introduced to, um, the off sale. She wants to share that with the liquor committee and discuss those options. Yes, we've gotten some feedback with the places that are selling it. And their sales are crazy.
Alright, uh, anything else, Melissa?
Uh, not that I can think of, I'm just going with anything for me.
Yeah, for the legal, our, our gambling thing was perfect.
Right.
Uh, if I could pop in for a second before you move on, I just forgot one thing, I would like to request a public works meeting sometime this month if possible. Okay. You have any dates in mind, Mike?
Um, I can usually make just about anything work by shuffling stuff around, so whatever works for the members of the P and should most likely be fine like that.
You got on that. Tuesday is probably the best day of the week for me, and, um, what I schedule right now. I think that would probably work best because it's me, you, Christina, and Shonda, I believe. Shonda's usually on on Tuesdays, I think. And also depending on what time.
Yeah. Tuesdays are good for you guys.
Yeah, that's.
I will put something together and send over my notes.
For you. Okay. What's going on? Alright. Law enforcement.
Uh, uh, Josh Earhart will be at the county fair starting Wednesday through the weekend, um, he's been working, uh, overlapping a little bit on Fridays with, um, Zach. And, uh, he'll be attending, um, the next school board meeting, which is actually this Wednesday. He wants to discuss with the school board members his concerns for um, security of the school, um, and just some other uh, input that he has for the board members on, you know, keeping the kids safe during school and your building safe, so he's gonna turn that. Um, he and I are working on some preliminary, uh, twenty-four budget items, um, and discussing the replacement of the two thousand fourteen, uh, squad, which is slated to be flipped in twenty-four. I was using his, um, partnership with the county and what they're looking for for their state bid on brands and what they can go with and what will work for us. I'm trying to get some preliminary numbers. And, uh, maybe we'll have something for you guys in a month or so. But right now, we have about thirty-nine thousand dollars in that depreciation fund, and that won't even touch it. Right now, I think the least expensive are the Durangles. And the county is looking at, um, base bid of forty-seven. So I have a couple of ideas that state money that's coming in, so please, nothing's in there. It's not an ineligible item. So that's a potential, and there's no expiration date on that money, it's not coming till December twenty-sixth. So we could potentially use that for the squad if we need it, because forty-seven is just gonna get us the squad, then we have to equip it. And I think the last time we got the Tahoe in nineteen, you know, we.
Things were considerably different.
Well, things were considerably different, but not only that, Jason taken a year and a half before we had even gotten the right, you know, machine that we were gonna buy. So we were able to depreciate another ten thousand, and if you remember correctly, we did a budget for a ten thousand depreciation in twenty-two, but we didn't like three, I believe, if I got my, my dates right. So we're gonna be in a hole ten thousand, but we also thought we'd have both squads running in the last two years, so a little bit of a juggling match here with money and years, years of the machine, um, we probably won't get much for that explore, no. But we'll get something for it, because obviously we gotta, we're not gonna keep it.
Yeah. It was more than five months.
And there's been so many problems, there were so many problems with that thing, so, either way, um, those are some of the things that Josh and I have been working with and discussing with the county, um, the county is also going to, um, a new reporting system. LETG is going away, and there's a new system for records that's going to be introduced in twenty-four. Um, the county has not, um, has committed to not charging our city for any part of that license at this point. Um, it's a shared responsibility to between sheriffs, the city, the Michie, and the, um, and the jail. And, uh, our deputy sheriff has basically said it's such a small amount that our front horse uses for our squads that it's not worth charging the city for. So at this point, when we make that changeover to the records, we'll migrate, we'll migrate to that as well. So at this point, when we make that changeover to the records, we'll migrate to that as well. What else? They're fully moved into the facility. The passcode has been changed. All the officers and the deputies know what that is. I'm working to get Officer Frank to return the explorer back up here. It's been at his place since he. Started separating his service to us. It's been kind of a transport back and forth when he has been working for us, but it's been very limited. So I want to get that squad up here. One of the things that you're hurt has recognized since moving into the new facility is because the facility is a metal building. They're getting drop calls and drop service on their armor system because of the makeup of the facility. So he's working with the county. To get a repeater on the building. So that they don't lose their radio and their phone calls while they're in it. I think what else? What I have for agenda, item that needs approval, I discussed to you guys in the work session. And that's to replace the stalker radio radar with a revolt. From Rogers two-way. So as you recall, when I reported last month. I said that Josh was getting a better quote from the state bid from actual from stalker. That's this quote. Two zero seven six four one seven for thirty-two fifty. That does not include the labor. Rogers two-way would still charge us installation of two eighty, two hundred and eighty dollars and fifty cents. So what I need approval to move forward with this, we can get this in the taco. Is approval of this quote plus installation, which should total.
What was the bid from?
From Rogers? The Rogers bid was for the same radio. No, that was the D S D S R two for the D S R two, which is a step below this two X was thirty-nine fifty. Yeah, when Josh realized that that was the case, they were throwing a thousand dollars on top of it. He called him out on it. There, the stalker quote for just the D S R two is twenty-nine ninety-five. It is quite a saving, so it was a good call on his part that he figured that one out. So that'll save us a thousand bucks.
So we're we would be getting this directly from stalker?
We'll get the, yep, we'll get the equipment from stalker and then Rogers two-way will install it on.
And the previous bid was run two-way bid for the same item?
For a unit that's one level below.
So they were marked together.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Makes sense.
Which is pretty strong.
Yep. Thankfully, Josh figured out against they've been pricing on this. They will still install. No, they won't. It's too big of a contract and too big of a monopoly up here. I mean, there's the next closest. Company that does. Emergency management installation is down in Apple Valley. Doesn't make any sense to bring a squad down there and then you're competing against. All the other departments that are down there for emergency management. You'd be waiting forever. And so it's long enough that. Rogers two-way has such a. An area of coverage right now.
Okay, so we need to. Prove this?
Yes, please.
This is going in.
It'll go in the Tahoe. Correct. Yep, it'll replace the existing one. The one that is existing. You may recall, I said, is from two thousand six. It's been moved from squad to squad to squad. And it's 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 used up.
So will we buy a new? New one? New squad?
We can move it again. Typically, what happens is when we do the transition to the new squad, there is proprietary. Equipment that has to be built into the squad for that particular type of make and model. Unit, but there are a lot of things that can be. Moved, taken out. We don't wanna move into the new one. Yeah. We'll cherry pick everything.
Oh, sure, yeah. Motion to approve the.
I'm much to say the stalker radio.
Stalker radio quote. Two zero seven six. Four one seven D S R two X radio.
With installation.
With with installation from Rogers to way.
Correct.
I'll second that. Do they have any? Further conversation on it? Before I ask for a vote? All's in favor?
I.
We'll go to the fire department. Unless there's something else for the. I did wanna mention. It was nice to be sure. Raise at the Woodcarvers Festival. But it was really, really nice to see you. It was quite, it was a, it was a nice presence to have. Before I forget.
Okay, so fire. Couple of things for fire. First and foremost. Is needing approval for the invoice. So that I can send payments for. The new freightliner. At the work session I reported. That the fund balance or fund two oh eight that this will be paid from had three hundred and twenty-four thousand. Nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents in it. After tonight's meeting. I will move the two thousand twenty-three. Fund transfer of thirty thousand. Bringing the balance up to three hundred and fifty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. I think there's been some interest on this fund. So it'll be like three hundred and fifty-five thousand nine hundred and five dollars after I make the transfers tomorrow. So that brings us. Eighteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars that will be. Taken from the special equipment fund. That is fun two sixteen on your fund balance report that has a four hundred and ninety thousand dollar balance. So what I'm asking for, that's reverb. Is approval on the McQueen emergency invoice. For. Three hundred and seventy-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. To be paid from the fund. Two oh eight. And two sixteen, which is the special equipment fund.
We would be paying this shortly then?
Tomorrow. Big check.
Are we expecting delivery in any particular time?
Um, they have it down also down in the city, as I believe, also Apple Valley. And I meet with Brian on Wednesday to do his budget. He's making arrangements. To go down there with another. Fire department personnel to pick it up. There is some equipment, lights, those types of things that need to go on it, much like we did when the chassis got. Delivered, that's being retrofitted as well. So you may not actually see it in service in the fleet for at least a month to two months. Yeah, Ron. Decals, there's a lot of hose. There's a lot of things that need to.
Or are those lights put out here or?
Actually, Brian does a lot of it.
So it'll be, it's basically ready to be picked up now?
Yes, yes. After they get their check.
So we need a motion to approve. For that amount. Our on two oh eight and.
Two sixteen.
Two sixteen.
One of them is the savings account. The other one's the checking account.
I will move the approve the McQueen invoice for three hundred and seventy-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. He paid our funds two oh eight and two sixteen.
Perfect, thank you.
I have a second.
Second that.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
We heard that I put the rest of my data. Look at, I got myself almost screwed up, you guys.
Hey, you know. It's just us.
It's just a lot of paperwork. One, two, and three. Okay, the next thing I need approval for the fire department is. A new policy governing fingerprinting, fingerprint based criminal history record information. You may recall, I spoke about this briefly at the work session. This goes through the V C A. This is pretty much a boilerplate policy that was sent to us from. That department. And what it basically governs is the storage, the authority and the process and the retention. Of the fingerprinting of non-criminal justice for non-criminal justice purposes. There's a statute that was passed back in two thousand thirteen that requires fingerprinting of. All volunteer and on paid on call firefighters do in part that they. Can and may come and contact the juveniles and folks that are, you know, special. Needs or in a nursing home and it's. It's sensitive information. So since then has happened, we've been fingerprinting all of our. Our new firefighters. But the B C A has never audited. In the last ten years, this process and they just started it now. We need to have this policy in-house authorizing myself and the police chief. To care for those sensitive. That sensitive data and how it is handled. And this policy will provide for that. So I need the policy passed.
Is there like, is this a physical copy?
Yes, it is. So there's a, there's a, yep, there's a chain of custody. Stated in there as well, yeah. Yeah, it goes from. When that candidate goes to the sheriff's office and gets fingerprinted from that person pays for it, brings it back here, hands it to me. I take it, I process it and mail it to the V C A. And then the V C A sends me back their results, so. There is, I've been doing it for ten years. It's just. They are requiring the policy be on hand now so that everyone is covered.
Then you should make sure you get them.
Yeah, yeah.
So right now they go to the sheriff's office to have.
We don't have, yeah, we don't, sheriff's office takes care of all of our records. So they have a better facility to handle this. We have nowhere in town that does fingerprinting. Either electronic or paper.
And then they bring you a physical card?
Nope. If you were the one that's getting fingerprinted and you go there and make an appointment, you give them their money. You can buy up to two cards. They hand them to you. You as the person that's getting fingerprinted and you and whichever you wish for done at that point.
And then they bring it here.
Yep, if that person is in this position that's being free employment, then they physically bring it to me. So that's that chain of custody. I do not say go to the V C A. The only thing that comes back to me is the results.
Okay, I need a motion to approve. The city of Blackwood policy governing fingerprint based criminal history.
I made a motion to approve a policy governing, governing Chris. Or C H R I. Check, check for non-criminal justice purposes.
You've done. I'll second that. Do we have any other discussion on it? All those in favor? I. opposed? Here none, motion carries.
Thank you. Just, just so you know that not only is the policy stay on hand, but there's also. Online training that myself and your. Fire chief have to go through with the V C A. You know, that backs up this policy. So everybody knows that these are the only two entities in your city that actually have authorization to. View the results and help with that process. So that's as far as it goes. On the last thing under fire is the fire protection and annual. Meeting has been set for August twenty-fourth here at city hall at six P M. I do apologize, but I don't have a full packet to put in tonight's agenda yet because Brian and I still have to meet on Wednesday to do this budget. So that'll be reported in the work sessions. Budget or the September eleventh council meeting. So I'm assuming you'll be there, Max? Well, either way. Representative from the city, other than myself.
I'll make sure that either I'm here or somebody's here. When do you go on vacation? Oh. Wow.
It's a Thursday night. I'll let you guys communicate when you can make it. I mean, just having somebody other than myself represent those days. That's all I have for fire.
All right. Anything new from the golf course?
I don't have anything to share.
I guess that's about it.
He's not here, so I'm gonna speak for her.
And from the library?
I was on vacation because of the unfair, so I don't have anything to relate. Mike, do you have anything to relate?
Some phantom noise over there somewhere that I have to go searching for. The book sale was pretty good, I guess. There was mixed reviews. Some people loved having it at the Woodcarvers Festival.
Rattle them in to help move books.
I didn't say I missed moving books. That's okay with me, but. So I think overall it was successful.
So they had that wrapped raptor thing up behind there, you know, so that. That 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 in that. She drew a lot of people up there. She kept on doing it. She was, she was only gonna do it like twice during the day.
What happened?
Well, she had she had birds.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, they usually do that.
So she had these birds, you know. Falcon or something. Anyway, so she drew and she was only gonna do it like twice during the day. Well, she did it like every twenty minutes. I mean, you know.
Said go to the book sale?
Some people were walking by, so we stopped and looked. And so she would do it the whole, she goes, she was getting sore and holding birds up. But she goes, bringing people up there to do the book, you know, so. Yeah, so she was like. If people are coming up here to do books, I'll keep going.
Are you Christina? I have nothing further. I have nothing further, my break.
Okay, so continuing on our conversation um regarding cannabis use in public. Places. I reached out to our attorney. And he provided to me a a copy of an ordinance that was passed in the city of Jordan recently. Fairly simple. So we can, we can nitpick this all we want, we can isolate it as much as we want and make it as detailed as you guys discussed. So I took the public property area and I expanded to the golf course, campground, the beach. All the city of Blackwood buildings, surrounding land, parking lots, and uh the liquor store. And plug that into that section there. Um what uh Langle wanted to point out was. Um yes, this does prohibit parking lots because you could make the argument that parking lot versus grass, which. I'm sure people would probably be like, hey, I'm standing in the grass, so I can use it, right? I'm not on your land. But you can make the argument that they're still available or accessible to the public because you're right next door, so. Um he encouraged, you know, putting everything in there that we want. Um he, he noted that um, you know, this, this does. Um item B says it, no person shall use cannabis flower, cannabis products. Or low potency hum edibles in beverage form in a public place or in public property. So this includes beverages as it's written here, which could also preempt the conversation. That uh the liquor store is trying to have, but I don't know if the liquor store just wants to sell it in the off sale. Not allow it, the use of it in the on sale and the, it would not fly in the on sale and swimming. It probably would, but I think he would, he could, I want mine and some of the conversation was that it would be just in the off sale. Okay, so that's good for conversation here. Um other notes that I got from Langle. Um we started talking more about regulating it when retail sales um. Potentially could have happened, like Brody's um location isn't a retail establishment. Um I don't know what's coming in the future for that, that would be a conversation at some point, but our zoning. Right now, um we can write it into our zoning ordinance if we want to, but prohibit where it is sold, if retail comes up. Um that is a separate conversation from this ordinance, so obviously, um. What else did I know? If um. The council is. Fine with this draft and doesn't want to see any more additions or. Deletions to the way I drafted it with Langle's suggestions. We could potentially have the first reading. At the September eleventh meeting. And the final reading on October ninth. Um and then it could be adopted and codified. Uh if that is what the council wants. Um in addition to the draft, I also provided a copy of what the common indoor act. States what's prohibited and what isn't, and. You have to keep reminding yourself that smoking tobacco versus cannabis is two completely different things. Right? So you can't completely get hung up on the indoor act. Um it's, it's the use of it smoking in public. Smoking it in public that you have to recor- remember as this ordinance is gonna get qualified.
I think it's important that we do something. As quickly as we, as we can, but as thoroughly as we can too, and a bunch of rewrites or making it. You know, that's the good thing is we can go back and. Add or take out or. As we go, kind of.
Well, you gotta keep in mind that your first and second readings, the draft has to be ready to go. You can't make adjustments afterwards, you have to learn a reading. So if the council is, wants to see any additions, you want to do it before um. It's made public, that the first reading's gonna be on September eleventh, and I have to have that. That notice posted no more, no less than ten days before the next meeting. So that kind of puts you at like. You know, your work session of August is when you really need someone to make any changes or additions to. So I, I'm, I'm open to suggestions and conversations at this point, so what you prefer to see. So the way this is wrote or written. If we decide to go forward with something in off sale, would we have to? No, the only thing in opposite, you, this, remember what I just said, this prohibits the smoking of cannabis in the public. Right, but I mean, like the hum edibles in beverage form. Yeah, cuz. That's this, the. You're not drinking it, right? You're not chewing on an edible, right? This is only for. The smoking section, smoking portion, okay, cannabis. Did you know they had that some, they have it in great stuff that, cuz that would be different than, right, okay, okay. Right. I just wanna clarification of that.
Yeah, well, in off sale, it would be they remove it from the property you use.
Correct, yes. Can't use it on the premise anyway, yeah.
Which is, I mean technically, right now you can't buy a six pack of beer. Open up one and chug it right at the counter when you're paying for it.
Right.
So it would be.
Hence off premise, yes. Yeah, um I talked to Langle about the golf course and the course itself, and he said the city of Stillwater. Wrote it into their ordinance too, to keep it away from people smoking um while you're on the course.
So are we comfortable where it says prohibited acts? Nowhere in this document does it say the word smoking. Are we comfortable that use means that no person should use cannabis flower? Energy products, maybe.
Because of, because of the way it's defined in statute from the top one of the definition, yes. You can read as much into it as you want to, but you have to go back to what the statute actually says. You can't eat cannabis flower. Well, you can, but you, that's not the intention. The intention with cannabis flower is to smoke it.
I'm gonna go with what it says here, Christina. I don't think you left anything out.
I mean, I can go back, circle back to Langle just on that, just to clarify on the smoking portion runs. Really, that's what we're, our focus is.
Because the only thing that's specific you mentioned is beverage, edible, sometimes. Right. Calling out that specific. Method.
And one of the.
Distribution, I will, do we, can we get by without the words smoking?
I, I think we can. I think one of the, one of the things I recall Langle saying is, it's difficult to um. How do you explain this? You ate an edible or you drank a beverage. You wouldn't know that I did that from standing right here. But if I was smoking something, you'd know because of the scent, the smell. And that's why it's hard to prohibit one versus uh the, the edibles versus the other. Because you can't, you, you can't distinguish. I mean, you can't give that up to your staff at the pond to know if somebody just had took a gummy. But you can if they're gonna smoke it.
So, so. The enforcement of this is gonna be so difficult, so they're expunging all the people that have gotten caught with. Small amounts of marijuana in the past, they're going back like ten years or whatever. They're expunging all these people's records. But moving forward, if you get caught doing it, you're getting a petty misdemeanor or a misdemeanor. In a proper place, okay, but. Well, what I'm saying is, so now they're gonna start charging people for it. How can you charge people for it if you're expunging everybody else's records? Well, that's the enforcement of it, so.
Because misdemeanors and felonies are two different things. One keeps somebody from getting a job. The other doesn't.
Well, but they're expunging even misdemeanors or petty misdemeanors, they're expunging. But and then now if they're get caught doing something in public, smoking marijuana in public, and the cop wants to give them a ticket for it, a petty misdemeanor. So how are they gonna, now all of a sudden, now I have another petty misdemeanor on, are they gonna expunge it, are you gonna charge him with it, go to court? It's but, and then give them a ticket, pay the fine, and then they expunge it? So you know what I'm saying, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of like a double assured there, I mean.
It doesn't help, it doesn't help that the statute's been approved. And now law enforcement and the judicial system has to play catch up.
Yeah. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but um.
But agree.
But this, I, I think what you wrote up here is. It kind of covers the city of Blackwater pretty good.
So then we can have our first reading. For the next council meeting.
Yep. That, that was, that was what I canceled out.
Good.
If that's what the council wants to see, then I can find for that.
We shall do it that way.
Okay.
Okay, next.
Um item B is just a report I put together. I talked to you guys about. The makeup money from U S D H, but from the temp bond for the facility and how that money was gonna. Go back into the budgets um that have been supporting. Our pocket expenses to bring the facility into a working unit, including. All the F F and E and the garbage removal, um and then additional equipment that we needed on the wash bay. So this um spreadsheet basically breaks it down by department. And the totals of those funds that are going back to each of those funds. Um it should more than take care of. Uh the extra costs that were associated with our League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Policies this year. Um and of course, it also takes care of the interest that came out of pocket and went back to those funds as well. But this is um, this is basically it in a nutshell. Make sure you guys understood what dollar amounts were going back into each department's operating funds. And this money already has been moved. If you look at the fund balance reported, provided in the consent agenda. The three eighty um temp bond fund is now at zero. And most of these operating funds, it's difficult to find the one, see the one oh one, but the budget. I'm sorry, the cash balance in six oh one and six oh two drastically went up. Because of these additional costs going back into their funds. Um I think prior to this, those two cash balances were trending somewhere around seventy-five grand, and now they're both over a hundred. So that was definitely a plus and will help us through the year. Questions on? Well, I created this, I know it's a lot of numbers and. Everything, but basically everything that was A four came right back in. Mike, I haven't had a chance to talk to you. Have you seen the final? I thought I emailed it to you and Josh.
I don't really, but so.
So if you have questions, we can talk. Those are good. Fantastic. It went back, I know.
That's what it appears, that's what we were working on, so it went back.
Now I'm, now I'm working on the bond payments for twenty-four for us. Uh. The last of my report is just all your um. Your monthly meetings, the development corps meets this Wednesday, the ninth and eleven at the golf course. Um this public hearings, press release notice, I, I added tonight. Got this from county, they're having another public hearing on a new jail location. On August fifteenth at five o'clock in the county boardroom. You'll know in the release that it's a different location, in case anybody's interested in attending.
Is, is anyone interested in attending or any backup to get a?
I, I would kind of follow it quite closely.
It would be recorded too, so the only way you'd be able to. Attend by Zoom is if you had like a question, like you wanted to ask, or if you wanted to be heard. Think then you have to ask for the advice from invite from Tom Berry's staff in order to do it that way. And why is you can watch the meeting after it's been posted to their website.
You can also show up, right?
Oh, yeah, you can absolutely show up, yeah. Uh next meetings, uh let's see, the planning commission meets on the sixteenth at two P M here at City Hall. The finance committee had its first meeting last Thursday. Its next meeting is August seventeenth, again at two o'clock. Here at City Hall for the twenty-fourth budget process. I should have police and fire and admin done by then for those operating budgets. August twenty-first will be your next uh city council work session. August thirty-first is the next finance committee meeting. Those will have three in August.
We're good.
September fourth is Labor Day, and in observance of that day, all city offices closed. So September eleventh is your next city council meeting. And that's all I have to report. If anybody has any questions for me. I am still working on the um. Drug safe workplace policy and the revised drug testing policy for just. You know, the departments that have to be tested, so I don't have that yet. Maybe I'll have it by the work session.
Anybody got anything else? Phil and Joe, yeah, okay. Anything from what's up?
Not that I can think of.
Okay. Make sure you guys are, we have any questions for that?
Yeah, for sure, I can relate it to him voluntarily.
Nice to see you. It's certainly interesting.
All this, all this cannabis thing's actually kind of interesting. Had no idea, it's difficult in all the cities. I mean, I imagine everybody's having the exact same conversations right now.
They are.
Well, not knowing a hundred percent what to do.
Yeah, was it you that stated at the last meeting that the city of Mitchuys choosing not to take a position on this like this time? Views in public? Someone told me that since the last time with that, I was very surprised.
I had not heard that.
For all we, each like. The triad took a stand on it, right?
Right away.
Last week, they, the whole reservation, they. They took a stand on it. They, any public places, including casinos, cannot use cannabis. Yeah.
I think, isn't, are they a dry?
No.
A dry? They're not, no. My no, white earth is though, right? I think white earth is dry, and I don't think that, I don't think cannabis. They have a tobacco store.
Well, they have a.
Their liquor store isn't in the. Their liquor store isn't in this, isn't the city, I thought.
There's someone, there's someone. Campus.
They are now, yeah, yeah, I saw that too.
They're, I don't think they're dry because. Years and years ago, we built. Wow. When I was back in construction, we built a casino there and they, they all their. So.
Should be interesting.
With that. It also. To during. Come second, but.
Okay.
And all the better. Hey, yep. And where you. Even Ron, when he's quiet like that. They will be.